... Institute of Flag of the United States of America, in two republics for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, good evening and welcome to the Morrison County Planning Commission Public Hearing for August 8th, 2023. I have a few items to cover before we get started. Please sign in at the door if you have not already done so. There will, there you will also find a detailed handout of the step-by-step procedure we will follow tonight if you wish to take one. Please put any electronic devices on a silent mode at this time. Also, please note that all testimony is being recorded for the record. Members of the planning commission are appointed by the county Board of Commissioners with one member from each of the five Commissioner districts. Land service staff is here to assist the planning commission with its duties. The task at a planning commission is to hold the public hearing and make a recommendation to the county Board of Commissioners for approval or denial of requests for conditional and near-term use permits, rezones, plats, and ordinance amendments, ordinance amendments in accordance with the state law and county ordinance. The burden of approving a request meets the criteria for approval rests with the applicant. There is a protocol for how we will proceed tonight. For each request on the agenda, we will hear a staff report, hear testimony from the applicants, and then we will discuss and gather more information as needed. Next, I will ask if there's anyone in the audience wishing to speak to the request. I will ask each party to come to the podium, state their name and address for the record, and give their testimony. Please be as factual as possible and direct all statements and questions to me. After all testimony is complete, I will close the public hearing portion of the process. The planning commission will then review and discuss the case in terms of our finding of fact criteria as required by the Minnesota statute and county ordinance. We'll have a series of votes, discuss whether conditions be made, and then there will be a final motion to recommend approval or deny, or denial to the county Board of Commissioners. After the final vote on your request, you may leave if you wish. The county Board of Commissioners will then consider the request and on our recommendation at their next regular meeting and will either grant or deny the request. So on the planning commission, we have one application here. Dwayne and Rebecca Klisch, 1-8289 Nature Road, Royalton. Application for a conditional use permit to expand to a Tier Two poultry feedlot located in point of south half of Section 36, Township 39, Range 32, Bellevue Township. The applicant would please come forward. When you get seated, if you'd state your name for the record, it'd be great.
Dwayne Klisch?
Brian Stephan.
Okay, at this time, Amy, you ready with your staff report?
I am, Mr. Chair. Again, this is an application for a conditional use permit to expand to a Tier Two beef and poultry feedlot. This is located in Section 36 of Bellevue Township. The ordinance reference for this request is Section 604.6 of the Morrison County Land Use Control Ordinance, and that requires a conditional use permit for establishment of feedlots. Here's a plat map of Bellevue Township, and the red dot is the location of the parcel. And then here's the conditional use permit request received from the applicant, and a site drawing also provided by the applicant. And then here's an aerial photograph of the parcel outlined in blue. The applicant lives on this 105-acre property in Section 36 of Bellevue Township, and the property is adjacent to the Royalton city limits. So here's a dialed-out view of the aerial photograph, and the dark blue line is the Royalton city limits. A Tier One beef and poultry feedlot currently exists on the parcel with 251 animal units. A variance was granted on May 16th, 2023, to expand to a Tier Two poultry beef feedlot within setbacks to the city limits. The applicant is proposing to expand to a Tier Two, which is 301 to 650 animal units, poultry beef feedlot, through the addition of a second poultry barn south of the existing barn. The total proposed animal units are 480.9. A portion of the property is within the City of Royalton's source water protection area for wellhead protection and high vulnerability for drinking water supply. This is addressed within the environmental review. A scrape-and-haul regime is currently utilized for manure management. Cleanout of the litter in the poultry barn occurs the spring of each year, as does the beef pen pack. There are plans to construct a manure stacking slab for manure storage. The soils around the poultry barn are suitable for stockpiling, however soils around the beef feedlot are not. For manure application, the applicant utilizes 726 and 1/2 acres. The acreage is in Morrison and Benton Counties. 192 spreadable acres is needed to utilize nitrogen, and 683 acres is needed to utilize the phosphorus. Since the feedlot operation is so spread out, the offset rating was run separately for the beef and poultry operation. The offset rating for the beef feedlot is 88%, and the rating for the poultry feedlot, including the second barn, is 98%. The applicant has submitted a Morrison County Good Neighbor Plan. That plan identifies that manure will be stored within a stacking slab, applied in the spring and incorporated within 24 hours via chisel plow. The plan also states they will notify neighbors when application occurs. Mortality disposal indicates composting as the primary method and burial as a secondary method. They also supplied an odor minimization plan, and that plan identifies elimination of manure buildup, maintenance of exhaust fans, avoidance of manure and dust accumulation, management of mortalities as required by the Minnesota Board of Animal Health, compost and managing mortalities in an enclosed structure, and reduction of length-of-time stockpile and manure pack as maintained for odor minimization. And the stormwater include, the stormwater plan included vegetative buffers and sloping of the site to the east to filter water through the hayfield for temporary erosion and sediment control. The applicant has been made aware that a water appropriation permit may be needed from the DNR. Agriculture zoning is the only district where new feedlots are allowed. The Morrison County Land Use Ordinance states the purpose of the agriculture zoning district is to promote and protect areas which have high-quality agriculture lands and are essentially rural in nature. Within this district, agriculture activities shall be given preference over other uses. An environmental review was conducted by the Soil and Water Conservation District, and that was included in your packet, and the comments and recommendations were that the site is favorable for barn construction. There is porous soil on site that will minimize runoff, but the barns should still have a grass buffer adjacent to the surrounding access road. Construction of a stacking slab would allow manure storage on site. Beef mortality should be disposed of via a rendering service instead of the current practice of burial on site because the beef operation is within the City of Royalton's drinking water supply management area. No manure storage occurs for the beef feedlot operation, and the poultry facility is not within the City of Royalton's dwisma. The applicable comprehensive plan goals and objectives for this one is agriculture, Goal A1, Objective 1, Objective 4 and 8, Goal A2 and A3 and A4, and then Objectives 1 and 3. And then the comprehensive water plan goals and objectives is groundwater, Goal 1 and 2, surface water, Goal, Objective A, and the land use and development, Goal, Objective A. 194 notices were sent, and no comment was received prior to the public hearing. And then here are your criteria questions, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you, Amy. At this time, would applicant have anything to add to the staff report, or any questions you'd have at this time?
No, I don't.
Okay. So I guess at this time, we'll turn it over to the planning commission. If you guys have any questions for the applicant or staff, go ahead and ask. I guess I'll ask them, being everybody's so energetic here. So there's just on this one sheet, it kind of talks about your, so one of these, it says the beef pen pack manure applied, or field applied, that lot clean out in the spring is applied at a rate of 10 tons per acre on 23 acres, according to the 23 management plan. But then the next paragraph down, it says manure management plan indicates that all 98 tons of beef manure generator are used in the fields. So on the one sheet, if it's 10 tons per acre on 23, it's 230 ton, and then here it says 98. So this is, that's just an oversight, or I mean...
I'm assuming it's an oversight because we're working with a, with a co-op as far as what's going, yeah.
So I just noticed that in there, and then the other thing I had... Okay, so it says you have 726 and 1/2 total acres that you can use to spread manure on with neighbors and all that stuff are contracted out. And it says here, spreadable acres needed to utilize phosphorus is 683. So you're at about 40, 43 extra acres than what you need. So as this moves forward, some of them fields might get a little bit higher in phosphorus. I'm assuming that there's plenty of fields that, like Timmons, I'm sure they'd probably take more manure. Is that correct? Or some of them people?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. I think that's all I really had at this time.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Dave.
Yeah, back to the beef feedlot. I know you had mentioned at our last hearing that you were reducing numbers, and the odor offset for the beef feedlot, you know, is 88, I think, which is a little lower than what we'd like to, or higher than, whatever, not as good as we'd like to see. I assume, and then there was also a comment about, you know, those soils are not, you know, where the beef feedlot is, are not suitable for stacking. So what are you planning to do to, you know, reduce the amount of bedding pack or manure that is stacked at the beef feedlot site and to minimize orders? At our last meeting, there was one public comment, and so I'm just curious, you know, you've spent a lot of time with this. We saw you back in May. You've been working with Soil and Water. You've, your manure management plan is prepared by who?
Amy Roback Bruce.
By whom?
Amy Roback.
Oh.
Out of Central.
Central Sota, okay. And that's renewed how often?
This would be the first renew, so this is a brand-new one. It's been updated.
Okay, but planned to update it annually, two years, three years?
Normally, I believe, it's whatever Central Sota brings it to be. Normally, it's every year.
I mean, these phosphorus contents are really hard, I mean, you get pretty high in chicken country.
David, if I can interject.
Yeah.
You get spot checked, and you got to keep records. There is no renewal time, but there is oversight on it by the manager, which would be Amy from Central Sota.
Yeah.
There is no, like, renewal period, but there is, every, they try to see you every three years because you're supposed to keep records for three years.
But landowners should be proactive in that, too, especially in high phosphorus areas. But back to the question, the beef feedlot odor minimization and stacking manure, what are your plans there? Same as you've been doing? You've got a stacking slab?
So, so, yeah, so the ideas I've had with, with my brother-in-law anyways, have been to take the stack instead of having it in the feedlot and moving it to the stacking slab, or stacking it on more suitable site, which would be by the chicken barn, instead of keeping it over by the feedlot.
Okay, which should probably help with orders also.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Most, most of the manure from the cow is anywhere in the loafing shed, so there's a roof over it, so that's where we normally bed. So the only stuff that's usually outside is when they use the bathroom outside or where the hay bunks are at.
Oh, I see. So it's undercover on concrete even, or some of it or not?
Uh, no, it's all, it's all.
I guess it doesn't matter.
Actually, it's all clay-based. I put all clay-based underneath, so it's more condensed.
All right, all right, all right, thanks. Also, just a comment that 194 notices were sent out to the same, same 194 last time for the variance request, Amy? So, and two public notices in the record, Morrison County Record?
Yes.
Okay, so people are well-informed. The, did the city receive a notice on this last one, too, and information on the feedlot, I mean, on the CUP?
Go ahead, Amy.
Yes, the City of Royalton received the same packet you did.
Okay.
And so they got the full packet of information, and we did not receive any comment from them.
And township, any comment?
No comment.
Okay, all right.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Amy.
One of the things in the environmental review was the practice of burial on site for cattle, and the recommendation was to render instead. Is that your plan moving forward, or are you looking to change that practice?
Go ahead.
Well, if that, if that's what it takes, yeah. But normally, if we do have a dead animal, it's not that often. It's usually just a small calf, and we were just burying it, you know, in, in the woods area. But, yeah, but that's about it. We don't usually have that many dead animals ever, really.
You could probably use that mortality shed for that, too.
Yeah.
I don't think it matters if there's poultry mixed with.
Yeah, I could probably put it into the...
The chicken manure.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The compost, the compost end of it, yeah.
Mr. Chair, one more question. A lot of, a lot of this is circling on when, when the stacking slab gets built, when we have the stacking slab, because you don't have one now. What are the, what are the, what is your timeline for the stacking slab?
Well, current application is in with the NRCS in Little Falls for the Morrison County team, so hopefully next spring we'll be chosen for the ranking.
So it's in the queue?
It's in the queue as of right now, just based off knowledge with the amount of money coming back from IRA. Not saying anything's guaranteed, but, I mean, we have a shooting chance, it's like everybody else, so.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Okay, finished, Dave?
Yeah. Clarify that answer on beef mortalities. What's your policy going to be?
We can, we can get, we can probably render, or I could also put it into the compost area where I compost my dead birds.
So you will render, or you will compost?
Yep, okay. Not a probably. No, yeah, not a problem with that. Probably will, you will. Okay, thank you.
Is that it, Dave?
Yes.
Okay, Marvin, go ahead.
Mr. Chair, I know Amy and Dave hit a few of these up, but I was just going to go over, I'm assuming you went over the packet with Soil and Water recommended, and, you know, here, one of them also was the grass buffer, what I'm assuming all these recommendations that they're recommending you were going to follow, and, you know, about the manure stacking was another one, beef mortalities was another one, and manure storage, it was all part of this. I assume you read them, and you're favorable to do that?
Yeah.
Okay, just confirming that. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Brent.
This question is probably for Dwayne. One of the questions that we have to answer here tonight in the affirmative is, you know, burdens on roadways, utilities, public facilities, parks, and schools. As you do your operation now, being close to the schools, maybe just explain how that is now and how you expect that might change or not change with respect to a burden on the roadways or schools or school traffic, I guess would be the concern there.
Well, more than likely, you know, if I do get the second barn, there's going to be twice as many trucks, you know, for feed trucks or vice versa. And I know when they do load out, they don't even go through town. They always go back around, and they take the county roads. When they, when they take birds out, they don't even run through town, and, and I don't think I, when they're a school out, I don't really think they go through town. That, that I know of.
Okay.
For the, for the trucks. I, you know, I don't know that ended operation, when they come and when they go. Sometimes they come in the middle of the night, majority of the time.
Okay, thanks. That's kind of what I wanted to hear.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, we'll move to the public comment. I guess I'll open a portion of the meeting to the public, so if there's anybody from the public that want to come up and speak, please go up to the podium and speak your name and where you're from, and state your piece.
Good afternoon. My name is Shannon Wetstein. I'm the district manager at the Morrison Soil and Water. And basically, I think you guys have already addressed most of the stuff in the environmental review, and obviously, we've done environmental reviews for other chicken barn expansions. This is a good site for expansion, and, you know, the considerations we've made in the past are the grass buffer, 50-foot grass buffer around the barns, which I think is good, even though the field right next door is theirs, but still to help prevent any future erosion at those field sites. And with the future stacking slab on site, I think that's really going to alleviate some of the concerns about the pen pack and manure storage over time before it can get transferred. Obviously, there's a lot of agricultural fields in that area. Talking with them and relationship with their neighbors, I don't think they'll have any sort of issues with transferring phosphorus levels get high in the future. It just is a matter of staying on top of what those phosphorus levels are in the soil as they move forward. So I just wanted to state for the record, from our review, it's a good site for expansion. It's just, you know, a little bit unfortunate how close they are to the City of Royalton, but that has been addressed through the variance hearing prior. But as far as the chicken barn expansion, it is a good site. So if anyone has any questions, otherwise, I just want to put a comment in for the record.
Yeah, maybe I have one, Shannon. I thought I was reading through this environmental review. I can't find it right now, and maybe it's not in here, and I dreamed it up, but... So with this site, until a stacking slab comes, was, am I correct in saying that this soil in that spot is suitable to stack manure until a stacking slab would come?
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Amy.
That was actually answered by our feedlot officer in his report.
Oh, that's where I seen it.
Yep, and the soils around the poultry barn are suitable for stockpiling.
That's what I thought, but you'd agree with that, Shannon?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Does anyone have any other questions for Shannon? Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Any other public comment? Any other public comment? Any other public comment? Hearing none, we'll close this portion of the meeting to the public. So you guys ready to go to our questions? Go through them?
Mr. Chair, just.
Go ahead, Dave.
Like to add the comment that since there was a variance required, we were all there to view the property, and so we have, not all CUPs are that way, very few of them, as a matter of fact. So we have, you know, pretty good firsthand knowledge of the site and the suitability for it and how it's located, and, and it is a very nice site. I mean, especially as far as natural water flow and retention of water from neighbors, and, yep, and shouldn't ever leave your property any water. I mean, should gradually dissipate before leaving your property, even a big rain, as long as you got the grass around the buildings and you got the grass waterways, and don't, don't change that entry into your chicken area there. Don't change your roadway at all, so.
Okay, okay, we'll move on to these questions. So the first one, "The use would not put an excess burden on roadways, utilities, and public facilities such as parks and schools." And since Brent asked that question, we'll start with him.
Yeah, I don't think that there'll be any excess burden, although there's going to be doubling of, you know, the, the trucks that are hauling. The hours of hauling and operations should be offset from the other activities of the school and/or parks or recreations in the area, so I don't see where there'll be an excessive burden put on anything in that area.
Anybody else have anything to add to question one?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Dave.
Just like to add that, you know, this has been thoroughly, you know, shared with the public, 194 letters, two times, in the paper twice. City is very aware of what's happening, and nobody has, there's been no input from county engineer, township, anyplace that there's excessive burden of any kind here, so.
Okay. We'll move on to question two then. "The request would not be detrimental to the use and enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity for the purposes already permitted, nor impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of surrounding vacant property for uses predominant area." We'll start with you, Dave.
Yeah, same reason I gave on number one. You know, all of very well-advertised as to what's happening, letters to 194 people. None of them have come back saying that any of their rights are going to be infringed on, or that it's detrimental to the use of their property, so. And as far as environment go, we have an environmental review. The city has thoroughly reviewed the, you know, the, the effect it might have on their water supply, and it's, again, it's out of that area, but still, they're made, they may, been made aware of it. The DNR will weigh in on wells and if, you know, and water use, so.
I think you're answering number three, Dave.
Okay, use this, use it for that one, too.
Okay. Anybody else have anything to add to question two? Okay, if not, we'll move on to question three. "The use and opinion of the planning commission is reasonably related to the existing land use and the environment. Groundwater, surface water, and air quality in the surrounding area will not be adversely affected by the proposed use." Marvin?
As our district manager from Soil and Water stated, that this is an excellent site, and it's very suitable. As we can see, there's buffers from trees, and they're going to be grass. I mean, you couldn't ask for a better site, in my opinion. The only part that, they were near the, what is it, city water site, but they're not in it, and there were no negative remarks. It's a 98% offset rating to this poultry barn, which is almost perfect, and they're willing to take steps with the beef to change that, to bring that up there. So, I mean, here, I don't think, out of all the sites that I've seen, barns that we've allowed, I think this is probably one of the most suitable.
Okay, I would agree with that statement. Anybody else have anything to add to question three? Okay, question four. "The use is, and the use is consistent with the purpose of the zoning ordinance and the purpose of the zoning district in which the applicant intends to locate the proposed use." And I'll take that one, and yes, it's, we allow this in egg zoning, that's the only place you can do this. So this is in egg zoning, so that fits in there, and the purpose is an egg use, and this poultry facility is egg use. We can tie in what was spoken on some of these other questions about how the site is very suitable for it. A lot of times, we don't get them that far off the road. I know it's in proximity to the city limits, to the school, to their, their watershed, or whatever their water appropriation part is, but it's out of it. And I think just the way the landscape is, it totally fits in this, in this, and it's totally in the right purpose for what that zoning district is, is for, so. That'd be my question, my answer for question four. Does anybody have anything to add? If not, we'll move to question five. "The use is not in conflict with the comprehensive plan or the water plan of the county." Brent?
I don't, I don't see where it's in conflict with it. I think it is in harmony with it, being that it's egg use and egg zoning part of the county. With reference to the water plan of the county, I think utilizing the stacking slab and/or rendering in the future is beneficial to the water plan of the county. Also, the, the talk of the 50-foot buffers around and the trees and the land surrounding there all makes a suitable area for this, so I don't think it's in conflict.
Okay, I would add that, again, what Brent said with the stacking slab and some of the precautions with our buffers and stuff, that that takes care of, or helps mitigate the, the water plan. But if you go through our list in our comprehensive plan goals and objectives, every one of them, if you think about that site, you can, you could kind of agree that they meet them standards, so that's what I would say about question five. Anybody else have anything? Anybody else have anything to add on question five?
Uh, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Dave.
Just like to state that, you know, Dwayne has worked with quite a number of agencies, the NRCS on this cost sharing on the stacking slab, and then engineering of it, Soil and Conservation Service on the environmental plan, and input from them as to stormwater, and how to prevent issues there. You know, Centrosota on the nutrient management plan, and will continue working with them on that. He's worked with the feedlot officer, and corrected an issue with the beef feedlot, and is in harmony with the ordinance on that now. Will have to have the box checked by the DNR on water use, so, I don't know, what, what have you, what do you think of this whole process, Dwayne? Have you, was it a good process for you, or have you, things that you've learned that you, will make you a better steward of the land?
No. That's just hearsay.
Yeah, I'll ask him later.
That's just, just forget it.
But, yeah, that's, yeah, it's been completely vetted, and, and he must be a pretty good steward. There's no complaints. I mean, if there was manure on the road, if there was excessive orders, there'd be people in here, and there would have been comments back, and there have been none.
Okay. So you guys ready to vote, then? We're going to call a vote.
Mr. Chair, do you want to have any conditions in mind as you vote?
Anybody have any conditions?
Mr. Chair, I'd recommend we follow the ones that Soil and Water recommended.
So, Mr. Chair, those would be around the beef mortalities, that they must be disposed of via rendering, or within the stacking slab once it's built. And then the grass buffer around the poultry barn, I believe, would be the two that would amount, would, the recommendations that would amount to a condition?
Otherwise, the other one was no manure storage occurs, and beef feedlot operation was another part of the recommendation.
Yes. So there'd be three conditions.
And just to be clear on that one, Marv, you mean like piling up manure, not like manure on the hay feeder in the shop?
Correct.
Okay, so you guys ready to vote with them, or you have any other conditions? I think that's probably sufficient. Okay, otherwise, we'll vote. Okay, question one. "The use will not put an excess burden on roadways, utilities, and public facilities such as parks and schools." Brent?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Marvin?
Yes.
Myself, Clint, is yes. Question two, "The requests will not be detrimental to the use and enjoyment of other property in immediate vicinity for the purposes already permitted, nor impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of surrounding vacant property for uses predominant area." Dave?
Yes.
Marvin?
Yes.
Myself, Clint, is yes. Brent?
Yes.
Question three, "The use and opinion of the planning commission is reasonably related to the existing land use and the environment. Groundwater, surface water, and air quality in the surrounding area will not be adversely affected by the proposed use." Marvin?
Yes.
Myself, Clint, is yes. Brent?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Question four, "The use is consistent with the purpose of the zoning ordinance and the purposes of the zoning district in which the applicant intends to locate the proposed use." Myself, Clint, is yes. Brent?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Marvin?
Yes.
Question five, "The use is not in conflict with the comprehensive plan or the water plan of the county." Brent?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Marvin?
Yes.
Myself, Clint, is yes. Looks like all the questions were answered in affirmative. Would somebody want to make a motion to recommend approval of this to the commissioners?
Mr. Chair, I move that we recommend the commissioners, okay, this CUP request.
With conditions?
With the conditions.
Is there a second?
I will second that, Mr. Chair.
Okay, there's a motion made and seconded to recommend approval with the conditions to the county commissioners for their August fifteenth meeting. All in favor, say aye. Brent?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Marvin?
Aye.
Myself, Clint, is aye. Okay, we'll recommend approval to the commissioners, and they'll hear this and make their decision on August fifteenth at their county board meeting.
So their regular meeting is in the morning, starts at nine AM. Generally not first on the agenda, though, so what they'll do is they'll consider your application, the recommendation of the planning commission, and then they'll ultimately grant or deny the permit. You certainly can show up, or you can just call a little later in the morning to find out what the outcome was, so.
Where is that information at, and what time the meeting is?
The agenda is posted online. It's generally not posted, though, until the Friday prior to the meeting is when that agenda puts, gets put together, and so you can check to see when the Land Services report is scheduled.
All right, sounds good. Thank you.
Location, I guess, is important.
Right here.
Right here.
All right, perfect. Okay, good luck, guys. Thanks for...
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, guess we got county in their minutes. Approved from June twenty-seventh.
There were a few errors in these minutes, if I remember right. Here, Sharon, did you change some of the things? Okay. I appreciate Dave's name changed there.
So that a motion approved?
As a motion approved with, with...
Changes, corrections. And Davey seconded. Okay, all in favor of passing the minutes, say aye. Myself's aye. Dave?
Aye.
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 Okay, minutes approved. Any new business?
Mr. Chair, I do not believe we have any new business for planning commission that I can think of.
Any old business? I don't think so, other than maybe that one that's postponed, but that's just, we don't know what's going on with that.
The postpone, the variance?
No. Oh, that was very, sorry, wrong meaning.
Yeah.
Sorry, wrong meaning.
So I don't, I don't have, yeah, I don't have anything for planning commission.
Okay, so hearing none of that, is going to have a motion adjourned?
Motion made.
Okay. Motion made by Brent, second by Dave. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Okay, meeting adjourned.
All right, Mr. Chair, give me just a second to switch gears here.